All right, I, Mayor Matt Gerding, call the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council meeting for the city of Somersworth to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Pepin.
Yeah.
Vincent?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Parity Cottenzero?
Here.
Micho?
Yeah.
Withum?
Here.
Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Messier?
Here.
Councillor Withum will lead the council in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Agenda Item Three, which is recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item Four on the agenda are scheduled public hearings. I'd like to note that there was a slight oversight and error in tonight's agenda, so the printed agendas you all have do not show that there is a public hearing, but there is in fact a public hearing tonight for Resolution thirty-eight twenty-four. So I'd just like to amend the agenda to reflect that. It was in fact posted on the city website, and we did the proper, you know, notifications in advance of that, so it's just a slight error in the agenda. But yes, there is a public hearing tonight for Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-four, which is a city council vote to authorize a bond to construct the Constitutional Way Complete Streets project, which would allow the city to enter into a bond agreement not to exceed two million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the construction of the Complete Streets project on Constitutional Way. So I'll open the public hearing for that. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight about Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-four? Anybody who wishes to speak at the public hearing for Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-four? All right, seeing as there are none, I will close the public hearing for Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-four. I'll move us to Agenda Item Five, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Please come on up if you do. Yes, we got one, we got two, we'll start. We got a woman coming up. Thank you so much. So just please state your name and the ward you live in, if you live here in Somersworth.
My name is Shonda Druin, and I live here in Somersworth at seven and a half Prospect Street. So I'm here, first I want to say my name is Shonda Druin, and I am a proud-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Can you just make sure that the green button is on, on that mic, so it's just right on, oop, right in above you? There's a stem, see, right on there.
There we go.
If you wouldn't mind just restating that, I apologize to-
No, you're fine. My name's Shonda Druin, I live in Somersworth at seven and a half Prospect Street.
Thank you.
And I come here first and foremost as a proud addict and recovery. I speak on behalf of the homeless community that we see. They're homeless, they have nowhere to go. I was a member of this exact community. I was homeless right along with them for thirteen years. A lot of people think that going to rehab is the answer. A lot of people think it's a choice, but it's not. Unless you've lived it, you have no idea what it's like to claw your way out. Going to rehab is just a small piece. If you think of systems thinking, it's no different than a laptop taken apart, they're just components, they're just parts. Put it together, that is a laptop. It's no longer just parts. Rehab is just a part. A more significant part is a safe place to lay your head at night. What's the point in going to treatment if you have nothing to come back to? I was a member of the Drug Court community, very broken system in my opinion. I ended up doing my time anyway. You want to know why? Because I would go to treatment, and I would come back, and I would have nowhere to go. What's the point in being sober if you're going to be outside anyway? If there's no place to go? They're trying to get their lives back. They are human, we are human. They deserve the same amount that we all do, just because when people aren't addicts doesn't mean they don't deserve that, right? If it wasn't for people in my life, like Amy and Melena, that sat there and came into my life and supported me and gave me purpose and gave me a reason to live, I would probably be dead right now. That's just the reality. We are denying humans the right to have a place to go. Like, I'm not trying to be rude, but you guys push them into the woods, and then you push them out of the woods. The police go into the woods, destroy their sites, and then complain that we spend too much money on incarceration. We spend too much money sending our police into the woods. We spend too much money dealing with people being high out in public. Well, how do you fix that? At the shelter this year, we saved so many lives. The police were no longer going into woods, they were actually doing their jobs and protecting the community. Well, we protected and took care of what people like to see as a drain on society, a drain on our system. But they're not. They're sick people, they're not bad people. They're sick people that need to get well, they're good people that need help. First and foremost, they need a place to be. That solves so many issues. One of the biggest issues, let's, let's look at the news lately. Two girls, both been missing since January. Since January, just found one dead in Dover, in the woods. One dead, found dead in Barnstead, not in her car, but in the woods by her car. Like, is that not enough for us to be like, oh my god, we need to do something? These girls were stuck out, dead, in the woods, no one knew, freezing and thawing, freezing and thawing. That's inhumane, nobody deserves a death like that. We have the power to change it. I'm not trying to be rude, but I just heard someone, you guys say two million dollars on roads? Roads are drivable, guys. They are drivable. These people, they have nothing, and we complain that they pitch six tents on Will and Property. Well, what are you guys going to do when the shelter closes and there's hundreds of tents everywhere else, and your police are, instead of doing their actual job, are now trudging through the woods? Like, what are we going to do then when we find more dead bodies in the woods? Are we just going to stuff our head in the sand and act like it doesn't exist? Because it does exist, it's not going away. I worked at the shelter last year with SOS. We had thirty-eight to forty people average a night. This year, we pull average ninety to over a hundred, and those numbers are just going to keep going up. We need to give them the most basic necessities to be able to get their lives back. Just this year, we've been able to get countless people into treatment and onto housing lists from within the shelter. What, the biggest point here is what stability and people like Amy and Melena and Carly's home team gave me in my life, was I get to sit here and say that I'm almost two years sober, I get to sit here and say that I am a CRSW, I get to sit here and say that I work at Turning Point helping countless addicts find recovery, I'm a sponsor to multiple women. I'm also getting my bachelor's in psychology and counseling with a special focus on addiction, and I maintain a four-point-oh GPA. That's what stability gave me, because I went to rehab, I went to many rehabs, and I relapsed every single time I didn't have a place to go. You think Drug Court cared? When I was sleeping on the ground behind the treatment facility that I was at, just because I was that dedicated to my recovery, they didn't care. They let me sleep outside, and then pulled me back to Stratford County, and the moment that I made a mistake and used, thrown right back in jail. That fixes absolutely nothing. We could solve so many problems by just giving them one place to be. Saves you guys headache, saves the police from running all over the place, saves money on incarceration rates. We have the power to do that. We have the power to make it so they have a life just like mine, just like countless other people that I see that have their life back. There's not enough sober living out there to help them all, and they're not all addicts. Some of them are just people that got pushed out of their houses because the rates went up. I mean, just my mother alone, she's not an addict, she lived in the same apartment for ten years in Rochester, New Hampshire, and out of nowhere, her rent went from seven-fifty to sixteen-hundred, and she had to leave. That's sad. People that are old and on social security or disability, that are handicapped, veterans that have lived in their homes for multiple years, for decades, living at the Will and Warming Shelter. Women that are CNAs, that are teachers, living in a shelter, those people matter too, just like the addicts. We have the power to make that difference. We have the power to make that change and to help many people. We pledge allegiance to a flag, well, we're not doing this country any, any service by not caring about every single member of our community, not just the ones that we look to see as productive, tax-paying members of society, because these people could be but pain, hurt, guilt, shame, being cast out. Guess what? That keeps us in addiction. If you feel like nobody cares, that keeps you in addiction. I teach this every day. I learn this every day in school. So I come to you as one of them. Not all the things that I have, but at the basic point, I am an addict, and I will always be an addict, but I am an addict in recovery because I have stability. Let's be a part of that change. Let's make that change possible for these people, because guess what? Just by us loving on them this year? I mean, last year, I was able to get two or three people into treatment. We've gotten way more than that, done way more service. We can continue to do more, we just have to do it. And I, I mean, I'm sorry, I did not stand up for the public discussion about the two million dollars, but I definitely plan on bringing it up, because if we can put two million dollars into our roads, we can put money into giving these people a place to live year-round. The choice is yours. If you guys can go to bed at night and think about two dead girls in the woods for over two months, and that doesn't bother you, then I'm sorry, that doesn't, that doesn't speak very well. But think about when you go to bed at night, and you're saying, oh, it's too, too warm for a shelter to open, and you're sitting in your nice, comfortable room. Think about when you're cold, how you turn the heat up. Think about if you're hungry, you walk to the fridge and you get something to eat. You're thirsty, you turn on a faucet. These people have none of that, absolutely none of that. So why would they want to be different? Why would they want to change? I wouldn't want to change, because I didn't change until I had those things. So please, help these people. Help them come to the side of life that I was able to find through beautiful human beings like all the ones sitting in that back row right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work you do. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes, we have a gentleman here, we'll have him come up, and then we'll have you. Thank you. Again, if you wouldn't mind, please state your name and the ward you live in in the city.
Good evening, I'm Art Rosbury Yoder. I live at Twenty-One Shore Road. I've been a resident here, a citizen of Somersworth since spring of two thousand and seventeen, and it's my first opportunity to come say something, just been basically coasting along, but I've had a lot of good experiences here, and I wanted to take the opportunity to come and say a couple of thank yous to some folks in the city and about some things of the city. I acknowledge the lady that was before me, and I have the same concern she does, I certainly welcome her comments, and at the same time, I'd like to say something specific about a few people. I had the opportunity yesterday to make my first visit to the Somersworth Museum. I can't imagine why I wasted all those years in between and not, didn't take that opportunity, because it is one of the most incredible museums that I've been in ever. It's well organized, there's so much material there about the history and the culture of Somersworth. It's amazing, especially for its size and for the fact that it's basically run by volunteers. I, I certainly encourage anyone who's never been there, take a moment on Sunday, go see the museum. It's, you'll, you'll be amazed at what you could learn about the city and how, how just, just a few people can make so much difference by keeping that organized and doing such a good job of it. Second thing, I'd like to thank the folks who work in the city hall, not you people, but the people, you know, the, the people who work here, not, not that you don't work, but I'm talking about the people in, in the offices, in the clerks, and all the people who do the daily work. I've been in the, in the city hall a number of times over the years for this, that, and the other. I've never had a bad experience, I've never had a nasty attitude, I've never had anybody be unpleasant. I've always had a good, helpful, wonderful experience, and I'm pleased with that. I came here from New Jersey, and while in general, the folks in the towns there were pretty good, it wasn't without some, some grief on occasion, some attitude, never experienced that here, even when I had some concerns or some complaints, everybody handled it really well. In particular, I'd like to single out Shane Conlon, your code enforcement officer. I've had occasion in the last year or so to be working with him on an issue, and sometimes I've been a little angry or a little upset, he's always calmed me down, he's handled my concern very, very carefully, very thoughtfully. He's always answered my questions, he's always gotten back to me. Because I've had so much more of an experience with him, I want to point out that he has done an excellent job of code enforcement. It's a difficult job, because he's the person that goes out and says, you're in violation, you've got to change that. People don't like to hear that, and they, it makes them upset. He handles that, I think, in an admirable way. He's got a great attitude and a great manner of handling it, and I just wanted to say congratulations, Shane, you're one of the best city employees I've ever met, and I really appreciate what he's doing for you, and for the city, and for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight? Yes, we have another gentleman in the back coming up. And again, like before, please state your name and the ward in which you live in. Thank you.
I'd just like to second what he said, everybody's been super nice. I moved here late in last year. My name's Nathaniel Moore, I'm a CRSW, and I'm a resident at seven and a half Prospect Street. So, honorable members of the Somersworth City Council, I am here to advocate for the Will and Warming Shelter, having a continuum of care, and to rally support for the excellent management of Carly's Home Team in providing that care. In my tenure for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four season of the Warming Center being open, I have been a part of an amazing team that has provided multiple wraparound resources and case management that has had a lasting impact on the homeless population of Stratford County, including Somersworth, guys. There has been multiple agencies that have been involved in providing these services, including the Goodwin Mobile Health Unit, UNH Nurses in Training, the Dover Welfare Office, the Somersworth Welfare Office, the Rochester Welfare, Welfare Office, CAP, Community Partners, SOS, Working Fields, and other various esteemed and prestigious organizations in the Tri-City area. This has been an amazing feat to combat the epidemic of homelessness that has been a huge humanitarian issue within our own backyard. There is no cure for homelessness, and with the economy declining and inflation rapidly rising, it's a situation that will only get worse, not better. I'm grateful to all of you who have given your support to help aid this noble endeavor to combat homelessness and to help those who need it the most. There is no community without unity, and our community is our heritage and our wealth. The Will and Warming Shelter has had on average ninety-five people a night for the season. Ninety-five people a night, packed to the gills. I don't know if you, I've seen a lot of you guys down there, gratefully, thankfully. This is a drastic increase from last season, where the average ranges between forty to sixty people, right? So like, if we cut that in the middle, it's going to be fifty people a night. That's forty more people a night than last year. That is a substantial increase, right? The contract that was appropriated by Carly's Home Team was specifically designed for a maximum of sixty people a night, and the bid was substantially less than the next closest bid, two hundred and seven, eight, uh, two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars was the amount that secured the contract for Carly's Home Team. The next closest bid was CAP, was for twenty-five people a night, with, the precise number of twenty-five people a night, right? At two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we cut that, as a staff member at Carly's Home Team, we cut that by over fifty thousand dollars. Whoa. Not only that, but we're providing services and wraparound care for just about double, right? So, I mean, that speaks to a lot of different things, right? Carly's Home Team, and I mean, so there were other bids for the contract, some of them are like way out of the ballpark, right? And, I mean, gratefully, we were able to secure the bid, right? We've been open since November first, and we're continuing to uphold our end of the contract and continue until April first of this year, two thousand and twenty-four, hopefully beyond. There's been a ninety percent increase in the unique individuals attending the Warming Shelter, meaning that ninety more unique individuals have attended the Warming Shelter, right? Two hundred and sixty people uniquely have gone there, right? So that means two hundred and sixty individual characters have gone there this year. Utilized services at the Will and Warming Shelter helped them go from one place to another, given them wraparound services, given them a continuum of care, a warm place to rest their head at night. This is just giving contrast to the situation that's at hand, right? So let me just give you a couple of different figures. CAP had contracts with sixteen hotels and motels in the Tri-City area from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three, serving five hundred individuals, which burned up most, if not all, of the opiate abatement money, right? Which was extensively like providing a lot of shelter for the homeless population that ended in two thousand and twenty-three, right? So now we're past the fiscal year, and we're not providing those resources to the, to the homeless population. So, I mean, it's kind of no wonder that the homeless population has been rising. I mean, granted with the inflation of the dollar and things like that, but of course, like, when the opiate abatement money stopped, well, that's when the homeless population started rising again. And so, we are operating on a budget that has been graciously granted from Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester respectively. CAP had previously proposed a seasonal shelter that would serve as a bridge between the present and the opening of the shelter in the winter season. I would like to get behind that initiative, and I'm hoping to garner support for that, specifically because of the rising increase, the trend that is happening with the homeless population of the Tri-City area. So, not only that, but there's been much debate and rhetoric surrounding this, right? I most recently attended the county commissioners' meeting, which was a closed meeting, attending a staff of Carly's Home Team. Being open more days than the previous year, with more people being served than the contract was proposed for, the numbers came in under budget. Let's not lose sight of that. As of three-eleven, March eleventh, Carly's Home Team and the Will and Warming Shelter were in the ballpark of twenty-five thousand dollars under budget. We are on par to make sure that our numbers are going to stay under that. This speaks to me of excellent management, excellent budgeting, and excellent allocation. Way to go, Amy and Melena. Let's go. My hope is that you will support Carly's Home Team in continuing provide, continuing to provide the much-needed services to the homeless and needy population. I implore you to look at how we can find an amicable solution. I would humbly request that you look into a permanent shelter that can provide vital case management and wraparound services where it's needed the most. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Anybody else? Sure, yeah, come on up if you'd like, absolutely. I know we know you, but if you wouldn't also mind still doing the name-
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm just bringing this up as a point of order.
Sure.
I believe both speakers have exceeded the time limit.
Ah, that is a flaw of mine, that I get too engrossed in what people say, that I forgot to keep time, so thank you for reminding me.
I'm only bringing it up, not that I didn't want to hear what they had to say.
Certainly.
But that if you enforce it at a different time, that's unfair to who may come after.
Certainly, certainly, I appreciate that. Thank you for the heads up.
I promise I won't take more than five minutes.
Five minutes and thirty seconds.
So, so Amy Malone from Carly's Home Team, and I really don't have to speak to a lot of the things, because you saw, again, members of the unhoused community at one point and current staff speak truth to stuff that we just can't, you know? But we are at, so we had a state meeting, you know, today, every month, we go on state meetings to see how all the other counties are doing what they're doing, and how we can improve, and how make, make sure that we're spending down the state funding so it keeps, right, local taxes low. And we have seen more than any other balance of the state-county, two to three times more, so outside of Manchester and Nashua, two hundred and seventy-nine unique individuals, and that's almost five thousand bed nights, it's four thousand nine hundred and fourteen bed nights, which is how sort of these sort of things are calculated and, and used statistically. We have had thirteen people discharged into longer-term treatment, where those are the rehabilitations for substance use disorder. All thirteen of them will come back to this area within the next thirty, sixty, or ninety days to the same situation they left in, although they are doing their part to try to do what everybody has deemed the next steps, right? To get themselves healthy, and say, keep yourself housed as long as possible in the best care. All of these things cost a lot of money, right? Every time we send somebody to treatment and all of those things, especially if they're not ready, right, and they're just doing it for that basic necessity, that housing aspect, it doesn't last, and, and like Shonda had spoken to, and it doesn't last when you have to come back. So just keeping those in the forefront. We got one person into Riverside, we have another person pending. We've been able to have both Goodwin Community Health and Volunteers in Medicine come, and thirty-seven people have got, connected with a primary healthcare provider in the time that we've been there. We gave out over forty-five vaccines to vulnerable populations. We are seeing, when you look at the most vulnerable age groups, so to speak, youth and young adults, so eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, we have five to eight of them every single night. And then when you look at the vulnerable over fifty-five plus, that's somewhere between thirteen and twenty, and anywhere between as low as three veterans a night, all the way up to, we had, I think, seven or eight one night. We have been able to connect almost all of our vets, except for, I think we have four left that currently don't have anywhere to go, but the rest of them, through the VA, through Harbor Homes, through being able to have all of these service providers in. One of the things that I bragged about this, the Tri-City's doing and Stratford County doing, was allowing us to hold the service provider fair, and allowing us to open our doors, doors extra. Again, at the state level, like, a lot of the other people were like shaking their heads, like, yeah, that makes sense, like, have you come to that space? A lot of those places also have full-time shelters that aren't completely closing in a couple weeks, they have maybe their overage, you know, but for the majorities, they have some other spaces, so, but even to them, they thought it was evidence-based, and it was innovative, so I just want to give you all, we got support from all three cities when we asked for that, we're doing another one in March, we are, have, we're utilizing our Sundays, that they have allotted us and our extra times on Mondays to have the welfare offices and people come in. Our guests are planning a way to say thank- you to Somersworth, and one of the Sundays that they have so graciously given us till the end of the year is will be utilized for a Somersworth cleanup day with guests, you know, residents of the shelter, um, pitching in with, um, a group called Don't Trash Somersworth, um, and SOS, and some of the other agencies are all like, give us some trash bags and give us some stuff, and, um, we'll make sure, we've talked to the chief about making sure we're not, we don't go on any private property, get ourselves no trespass, but to make sure that we're, um, saying thank you for hosting us while you can, um, and still to put pressure on to find something because, right, April first, it's still cold, it's still wet, um, it's still windy. We're having people get injured outside in the wind. Um, if you saw my seventy-year-old vet with the stick through his face the other day, you might have, and I, I think, um, Mayor Gertie did meet him actually, and I appreciate you coming, um, and actually spending time with our humans. I think, um, you, you know, you know why we're, why we're doing this for them, because they, they do deserve it. So, um, I think, I think that's it. Like, that suggests, so thank you for what you've done. I really ask you to just push and keep trying and keep sending your mayors and your councilors to roll up their sleeves and help, um, and to really take a moment or two to speak to the people behind these walls, because they're not all what, um, you might think. Actually, most of them aren't.
Thank you so much.
I'll try to be quick. So, um, I, it's come up earlier, the six tents.
You can just state your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry, Melena Lugo, Carly's Home Team. Um, the, the tents were obviously i- an issue that's been brought up. Um, I just wanted to speak on that a little bit. So we did have the tents behind Willand. It's not something we authorized, it's not something we wanted, but it was a necessity. Um, how that started was we had two of our elderly handicapped guests, one with, in a wheelchair with one limb, and one who takes care of her that pulls an oxygen tank. Um, they did attempt to get out into the woods in the wheelchair, in the wet mud, and were unsuccessful, and their only solution to them at the time was to set up a tent behind Willand, because to them, they're safe, it's flat, they're not getting stuck in the mud and the rain and the wind, and, and then we had, well, another guest say, well, I'm not gonna leave these two elderly women who are, in my opinion, in the, the guest said, you know, they're handicapped, they're vulnerable, so I'm gonna set up a tent next to them to take care of them and watch out for them while they're sleeping. So now you have two tents. Then you have our, our deaf veteran who says, I have nowhere to go, that I'm gonna set up my tent over here, someone else sets up a tent to watch out for him. Before you know it, we have six tents, and it's, and all of them had some type of medically frail people that were dropped off to us by the various hospitals, people that, I mean, I personally have never tried to push someone's wheelchair through the mud and the muck while I'm pulling my oxygen tank, but I can't even imagine at all what that could possibly be like. And I understand very quickly how it happened, because they're, they're a community, they take care of each other. And I personally, you might have found me camping out there if it was just those two elderly women and no one else could have taken care of that. You might have found me in a tent nearby, or in my car in the parking lot, because, I, I mean, they had nowhere to go. So I, I just wanted to, to speak to that because it was so publicized, because it was mentioned here at your last meeting where I didn't say anything, because it was in the newspaper, because it's been on Facebook, and then th- those pictures, I just wanted you to see, so two of those pictures are where the tents actually were. We did not clean that area. That was done by the people that were, some of the people that were in those tents, others were guests. There's pictures of them out there. They asked, hey, can you, we have a, a staff who has a landscaping business, she brought them rakes, leaf floors, they were out there. They, we didn't do it, they did it. And so I just wanted to get that out there because of all of the, it's a mess, there's trash, there's, I mean, we walked the mayor around that whole area when he came by, just so, you know, you could see that things that are being portrayed are not actually what happened. So, I think that's really, I don't think I have much else.
Thank you so much.
But I just want, I mean, they help all the time. They're sweeping, they're, I mean, you can, you saw them, cleaning the fridge and mopping and raking and.
I can take a trash bag out.
Yeah, I mean, someone fixed, just this morning, my daughter's car had a piece of plastic, I don't know what it is, I'm not a car person, that was hanging down. I mentioned it, and within, can you get it here? And there's four guys laying on the ground in the parking lot, trying to fix my car so my daughter doesn't have to drive with the plastic scraping. And I'm like, guys, I can take it. No, 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 you don't need to take it anywhere, we'll do it. And they're all under the car today, like fixing it for, you know? They help us all the time. They're so, to them, I mean, the longer they're with us, the more they're able to stay, the more they're able to connect with services they wouldn't get. They're trying to pay back to us, and if they can do it by raking or bungee-ing and fixing a piece of plastic on my car, I, I mean, they're doing it, they're mopping, they're, I can't even take the trash out without twelve people trying to take the bag from me. Like, it's just, they're always helping us all the time. And I just, because of all of the negativity that's out there, I just want you all to know that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right, seeing, oh, are you looking to speak? All right, seeing as there is none, we will move on to our next agenda item. Uh, that is Agenda Item Six, Approval of the Consent Calendar. So the Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the City Council meeting held on March fourth, 2024. Do I have a motion? Yes. Counselor Gibson?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson moves that the consent calendar be approved as presented, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Uh, question for the council, is the adoption of the consent calendar, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, ayes appear to have it, ayes have it, consent calendar is adopted. That moves us to Agenda Item Seven, which is comments by city councilors. Yes, Counselor Peppin?
Yes, uh, the first lady that got up, and I'm sorry, I didn't, don't remember your name, you, you started me off on the wrong foot right off, when you turned around and accused our police department for slashing tents in the area. I know that, it's completely off the wall. I know when I heard the article, I've checked into it, all right? Our police officers have body cameras on, they're monitored all the time, their cruisers are monitored all the time, they, they know where they are at every frigging minute of the day. So that bothers me to no heights, to come in and accuse the police department, especially when the police chief stood up here in front of a public safety meeting and they ended up defending your organization to high hopes. Uh, so that, I'm, I'm getting that off of me. As far as your organization, I have all the faith in the world, and I bless you all for doing the work that you do, all right? My problem is not with the people that have drug problems, or the homeless people, or whatever. I spent thirty-two years in the fire service because I care about people, and I still do. I care about them very, very much. My problem is, right now, is that you've built a shelter that people are coming from everywhere to come here. Don't tell me no, don't shake your head no. I got Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester. I got Portsmouth, which you had, that your report said you had eight people coming in from, from the hospital, that was brought be from the hospital. Cape Natick, Exeter, Du- Dublin, Nashua, Farmington, and there was some from Maine that I've heard. And one of your reports says that we had fifty people from the city of Somersworth that are homeless. Now, if we are ten square miles and we have fifty people square, uh, homeless, that's a, that's a record, because that, well, that was more than Dover and Rochester's ever sent. So, and I really don't care where they're coming from, because they are homeless. My problem is, is that this is a bigger problem than the city of Somersworth and the city of Dover and Rochester, and I can't speak for the city, for the city of Dover and Rochester, but it's a bigger problem than what Somersworth can solve from the taxpayers. I am looking at, the school department came over, over a million and a half dollars over the tax cap, that we gotta try to figure out how we're gonna cut their education down. I don't know how we can do this. This is a county, you've got people from Rockingham County coming in here. And to me, it is just a bigger problem than what it is. Your facility is not big enough for it. The state needs to take a handle on this, and, and Stratford County needs to take a handle on this. This is where my problem is. My problem is not with your people, with you, or, or the homeless people, or the drug people. My problem is, is funding. When you start taking away from, from our taxpayers' money, from the kids of our education, that's where I have the problem. I have to answer to the taxpayers of the city of Somersworth. I have to answer to the people that are educated. And I don't mean this, and I see somebody is upset because of what I'm saying. I don't mean to be taking it out on you, because it's not you that I'm taking it out with. I'm taking it out on the states, the federal government, even the federal government. We'll, we import people from wherever, from, from the border, we're paying them to go to New York City and everything. New York can pay, probably can afford a million dollars a day, but Somersworth can't. And I guess that's, that's where my problem is. It's, it's not with your organization, so please, don't think it's the organization, and it's not the homeless people, it's, it's not that. My problem is, is that there's other people that need to be looking into this, just, and it shouldn't be just stumped on Somersworth and Rochester and Dover. I, I'm sorry for me being upset, but you upset me when you turned around and blamed my police department.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder to folks in the audience and to city councilors, we should not be engaging in debate. Uh, this is an opportunity for city councilors to express their opinions, uh, just as we had folks from the audience express theirs. So just a reminder to everybody in the room. Uh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. My fellow counselor beside me here is very compassionate about really helping people. He's been doing it his whole life. And I have to agree, um, with him that, uh, this is a bigger problem, and I've said it before, than just Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester. That's why I've gone to, um, George McGlars, the county commissioner, and have numerous talks with him about, um, about actually having it to be a county type of, it's a county problem. It, it, it's a, it's a New Hampshire problem, it's a national problem, but as we're speaking in this region, it's a, it's Stratford County. This way, um, you don't just have, uh, three cities flipping or funding the bill, so to speak. Uh, you know, when you need a court, when you need to go to court, we go to the Stratford County courthouse, and how that's paid for is that's paid for through the cities and towns. And it's based on the development of the city or town. Uh, if there's a lot of development, where there's more people that come into the area, then that, that one city pays a little bit more to Stratford County. So, um, I think that the wheels are in motion to actually, uh, get it to be a more of a county type of, um, uh, dealings, so to speak. I know that once we started talking about the, um, the nursing home, uh, at Stratford County, they were actually gonna take the old Riverside and, uh, possibly convert it into a homeless shelter. And, uh, but I think, um, just not to lose focus, I really think that this, uh, is a county issue, um, which three cities are paying for right now, where it should be in, in, it should be, it should be eleven. I believe there's eleven counties, or eleven cities or towns in Stratford County. You know, um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next up, Counselor Perry Catanzaro.
Thank you. Um, Xandra, I believe your name was, um, Jonda, thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you for coming and sharing your story, and also congratulate you on being two years sober and being such a great example of what can happen when we invest in people and give them the support that they need and the resources that they need. It's amazing. And thank you also for, you know, turning around and pulling people up the ladder behind you, because that's, that's really important, and that's how we can get it done. I think it's very appropriate that several of you recognize what an amazing job Carly's Home Team has done at this warming center. I see a lot of leadership. It's really exciting to hear that the warming shelter that we have here in Somersworth is helping to lead the way and share ideas with other counties. The service provider fair, that it sounds like other people are taking up that idea, that's incredible. I also want to highlight, um, that one of you, I believe it was Nathaniel, talked about how much cost-cutting this warming center has provided, and I agree with that, and I've heard that, uh, talked about before. Um, uh, I think I've mentioned before that working in public health, you, you learn about upfront investment in primary care versus emergency room care, which people generally don't pay back ever, and that's unfortunately always gonna come out of the taxpayer dollars. So to have this continuum of care that you have created at this place for so much less than what other, um, organizations could do is incredible. Um, I know other, uh, folks have shared, um, their hesitation to fund this going forward, or, um, you know, it's been said that there's, it's a county issue, it's a state issue, it's a national issue. Yes, absolutely. It's also a Somersworth issue. Um, and I would not be in support of ending this without something else to take its place, because the, if people have nowhere to go, people have nowhere to go, but that doesn't mean that they disappear. They're still gonna be here, they're still gonna need services that we can provide. Um, and it makes sense to have all that at a place where professionals who are competent in what these folks need are there to provide and connect them with resources. Thank you also to Amy and Melena for sharing some of those statistics of people who've been connected with long-term resources. That's amazing as well. I feel like, uh, several times, my comments have sort of ended with, well, I don't know what to do then, and I'll be in support of whatever the solution is. And I think, you know, we're kind of all at that point. I, again, I'll reiterate that I would support continuing this and here in the absence of another tangible solution. Um, I agree that the building is not ideal, there's not enough showers, there's not enough restrooms. I know, um, other, uh, municipal obligations such as schools, people bring in trailers as extra, housing as extra, um, bathrooms as extra showers. Um, and I can sense discomfort at some people of growing that space in that area, but if not there, then where? People are not gonna disappear, and their needs are not gonna disappear. So, um, I'm really glad that our mayor is really committed to finding a solution and talking with, um, other leaders in the area. I absolutely agree that the county needs to be stepping up and doing more. I don't think that absolves us of doing something. Um, and I was really disappointed to see that, um, that nursing house project, which I thought was very promising, that there, there could be an available building that was used for transitional housing, that plan was voted down again. And so I don't know how long it would be for something like that to work, because they have once again sort of kicked that can, and we can't keep passing the buck up and down and whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm in full support of at least continuing this very relatively small investment in what is working really, really well and having huge successes. Um, and I'm, I'm looking forward to bigger, long-term solutions.
Thank you. Uh, we'll have Counselor Witham, then Counselor Gibson.
Let me start by saying, I think I hold my own here in council chambers when it comes to understanding issues that confront the city, whether that's a budget, a project, uh, or any number of things. Uh, I don't hold my own on this issue. I fail miserably. I struggle to understand it, and for that, I apologize. But I tell you honestly that I'm trying to understand it, uh, and it's hard. So let me just start with that. Uh, and I also share that I've talked with trepidation on this issue, because for whatever reason, uh, the issue has become, I don't know, I'm gonna use the word somewhat adversarial, uh, and that's unfortunate, because that doesn't help anybody. Uh, and I'm not sure why that is, and maybe it's just a perception I have, but I have that perception that it's become somewhat adversarial, and we need to move beyond that, uh, if we're gonna solve any problem. Other councilors have said it's a county issue, it's a state issue, it's a national issue. I don't know who's I don't know whose issue it is. It's an issue. I can't blame anybody, I can't point a finger anywhere. If you could, that would help us in solving the problem, but you can't. The comments tonight, at times I felt like I was being scolded, at times I felt I was being thanked, so I'm equally as confused. I will say this. I think the tri-cities, Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester, have done, quite frankly, a pretty damn good job, right? We've actually put some money towards this issue. Now, we could argue that it's not enough. But I contend that if we took a poll of the 230-some-odd cities and towns here in New Hampshire, that the list of communities that put money towards helping the unhoused is pretty damn small. Again, I think we're trying here, right? Is it enough? Probably not, right? But I think we're trying, just like everybody here, right? To solve an issue that, I'm not sure where to point the blame, right? I am met by more frustrations than I am successes, which drives me batty. I like to solve problems. This is not one that I can think I can solve, so that's an impediment, for sure. But I read about the plan that had sort of been in the works to build a new county nursing home, and to take the existing nursing home and develop it into long-term shelter transitional housing, some combination thereof. That plan had merit. It's a bigger building, it's a sizable building, it's connected with services. It seemed to this guy who's struggling to understand all of this to make a ton of sense. And Commissioner McGlarris calls it the three-legged stool approach, right? So, you know, we're solving multiple problems. Unfortunately, as I watch this, the stool has been thrown in a fire and it's burning. We're not going to have it, right? I have zero, zero faith that the county will come through for us. Zero. I used to have faith in county government. I've never really had faith in state government, and I'm not going to go to the national government, that'll get me in trouble, right? But I've lost faith in county government now because of this. I still have faith with what we're doing. Where we go, I don't know, but I'm willing to learn and I'm trying to learn. I know two, three meetings ago, I spoke about everything from grocery carts to the porta-potties, right? And I get the need for all of those things. And councillor Goodwin, you talked about how homelessness is messy, right? Would tend to agree with you. Part of the struggle here, and maybe this is where some of that adversarialism, is that a word? It works now. Is that we may never get the community to embrace this. But we need to get the community to understand and accept what we're trying to do. And things like grocery carts and porta-potties, and, I don't know, tents on the back lawn, create that messiness which gets in the way of the conversation and maybe create some of that adversarialism. I used it twice. It's a word now, right? I don't mean to make light of it, I certainly don't, but I'm not sure I've said anything that helps anybody or does anything. I'm just sharing my feelings and, maybe more importantly, my frustrations. I'll end there.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson.
Firstly, I want to thank the people that spoke. I understand your desire to find support for what you're doing. I have to be in agreement with what the other councillors have said. Somersworth is doing as well as it can. We have a lot of demands on the funds that we do have. And as councillor Witham said, there's a lot of places in New Hampshire that are not doing anything for these folks. And I've got to think it's really comical when Portsmouth is shipping people to Somersworth. Well, not comical, sad. I mean, that's a city that's in much better financial state than we are, and they're sending people to us, which speaks well to what's being done at the shelter. And again, I don't have an answer. I don't know what we can do, but it needs to be a conversation at the national level and work its way down, like everything else does. Starts at the national, goes to the state, to the county, and then guess what? We foot the bill for it. I sympathize with what you're dealing with, and I understand that these folks are distressed, and they don't want to be. None of us do. But we can only do what we can do, and I hope everybody really understands that. We will do the best that we can with the resources that we have available to help anybody in this community. And whether it be first responders or us helping support the shelter itself, we'll do what we can, as best we can. The mentioning of cap and hotels, that really bothered me, because that is really an idiotic expenditure of money. They could have bought a building and put the people into it and had money left over compared to what they were paying out to hotels. But I guess that's not a conventional solution. Anyways, again, thank you for the people that have spoken, and as Mr. Witham said... What was that word you used? We don't want that to be the situation. We want to work together with everybody to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cameron, and then councillor Goodwin, you go after.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to all you folks that came up and spoke. And I'm sorry I don't remember your name, but it just goes to show that you can turn your life around with support. And it's sad to think that, you know, like you talked about, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, with not having a place to lay your head is very important. And I think we are all trying to do the right thing for everybody, for all the unhoused. And unfortunately, it grows, and it's grown over the years, which ultimately has made the facility not big enough for where you need to be and what you need to do. And like everybody else has said, we don't have the answer tonight. We know what the answer is. We need to do something else. There needs to be a bigger facility. There needs to be more space. But where? Where's that going to be? And I'm hoping that in these discussions and the tri-city mayors that keep working together with the county will come up with a solution, hopefully in the near future, not 20 years from now, but in the next whatever it's going to take to get where we need to be to help you. Because there are success stories, and I hope each and every one of you that are unhoused can have a success story like her, because you all deserve it. You all deserve that. So thank you for sharing what you've shared. And I'm sorry we can't give you a solution tonight, but I know we all want to work for it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the folks for their comments this evening. And I'll start by saying that I am also committed to continuing funding for the warming shelter until a better solution is found or a more permanent solution is found. Said previously that, you know, let's not forget what is the baby and what is the bathwater and the situation, and the baby is very much your organization and the work that you're doing, and we should be trying to nurture that and protect that. And the bathwater are the externalities that come with a very difficult job and a context that's under-resourced. And I think for me, the tension in this debate is really coming around a disconnect between scope and expectations. And that scope has changed over time, given the need, I think, and people may or may not have been expecting it, and so there's friction happening around that. So I definitely think that if and when a contract is renewed, I think I would have particular interest in making sure that we're having that conversation around the scope, around expectations, around trying to manage some of these externalities, you know, to ones that are important, whether it's shopping carts or porta-potties, to make the organization as successful as it can be in less-than-ideal contexts that it's currently in, while working simultaneously to advance a permanent solution. I commend the mayor for his focus on this issue. You know, to echo my councillors here, this really is an issue that Somersworth is going to need to partner on, ideally at the county level, lacking faith there. Somersworth will probably have to work with our tri-city partners. So the question is, who are we working with? Where is the facility going? What is the scope of that facility? These are all things that have yet to be determined, so it is not going to be an easy process. But I certainly support that process going forward. I know the mayor supports that process going forward, as does many of my fellow councillors. So know that we are thinking about this, that many of us are committed to continuing funding, to further funding for the mission, working with partners, knowing that we alone as a community don't have sufficient resources. But, you know, it's unfortunately not going to move as quickly as any of us would like it to move. That is the uncomfortable truth of it. And I think, just back to managing the best of worst situations, let's have a conversation around our expectations and how we can manage externalities so that we can both get out of the relationship what we're looking for. In your case, providing an essential service. In our case, you know, mitigating potential harms to the community or bodies. So in general, thank you so much for your work, and I appreciate you guys coming out.
Thank you. Other councillors?
Yes.
Councillor Mishu.
Thank you. Carly's home team, thank you very much for what you're doing. You're making a big difference, so keep up the good work. We'll try to do the best we can. Unfortunately, there's only three communities in Stratford County footing this whole bill for you guys: Dover, Somersworth, and Rochester. Just to let you know, Stratford County, there are 18 communities here, three cities that are coughing up all the money, make sure you guys can do what you can do, but there are other 15 communities in Stratford County that are coming forward to do nothing. I'm not sure if anybody asked them to do something, maybe we should, but what I can say is, please keep doing what you're doing. You're definitely making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. The councillors who have yet to speak. All right. That will move us on. Where were we? Seven. Brings us to item eight, which is communications. We have none tonight. Item nine is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We also have none. Brings us to item 10, which is the mayor's report. I would first like to announce the winners of the mayor's quarterly art contest. Folks have been hearing about this since I took office. An exciting piece. I have a blank space in my office, just waiting for this art to go in. But first, I would like to thank everybody who submitted work to this art contest. Many great submissions, certainly have a very talented community, which I appreciate. With thoughtful consideration, the mayor's commission on culture, ethnicity, and the arts decided at their recent meeting the three winning artists who will have their work displayed in the mayor's office throughout the year. So I'd like to congratulate our winners. First up was Nancy Mitchell for her winning photograph of Owlhead Lighthouse in Owlhead, Maine. We also had Bertha Robbins for her winning modern art quilt. And lastly, Kyla Yoder for winning her winning Throne Pottery Bowl. So really excited to have these throughout the year. These works will be displayed in the office for a period of three months, starting in April with Nancy Mitchell's photograph. So feel free to stop by, not only just to say hi to me, but also to check out the great Also would like to update the council on my meeting last week with the fellow tri-city mayors and the county commissioners regarding the Willand Warming Center. It's a very timely topic, since this is what we've been talking about tonight. I would first like to inform the council that tents have been removed, as we just learned about. They're no longer present at the property. The occupants of the tents were met with over the period of a few days in coordination with staff at the three cities, Carly's home team, so thank you, and 11 other service providers for the region, and provided service and shelter to many of these individuals. 19 individuals were assisted in total during this outreach. Two were placed in long-term shelters, four connected with treatment, and four connected with local welfare offices for services. Nine, however, did decline resources. But I would say that this is certainly an extremely successful and compassionate way to provide these individuals with needed resources. So thank you to everyone involved. At the mayor's meeting last week, we heard updates from the staff at Carly's home team on the operations at the Willand Center, and discussed plans for the remaining few weeks of the warming center's operations this season. Certainly concerns were raised, many of which we heard tonight, but about the closing of the center for the season, particularly those that were... There were a number that were not within... Excuse me, losing my place. Particularly that there would not be enough contact and communication with folks who utilize the shelter as we near the end of March, and fears that once the shelter closes, we'll lose contact with these folks and they'll no longer be able to have access to services. Other concerns were raised regarding constraints within our memorandum of agreement between the three cities, which were certainly noted, such as things as activation temperature, extensions of the contract beyond April 1st, and the number of open days that are allowable. These concerns, as I mentioned, were noted, but due to the nature of the agreement, could not necessarily be mitigated at this time, but are on our radar as we begin discussing contracts for next winter. And certainly, as we begin planning, I am dedicated to listening to these concerns and hoping that we can integrate them and to make for a more comprehensive plan for next year. I went into this meeting looking for solutions that could be reached within the bounds of our agreement, and noted that Carly's home team has been doing a phenomenal job providing compassionate service to this population, and has actually, as was also noted tonight, so you guys like stole my report tonight, so thank you, come in under budget, which I think is phenomenal. The flexibility in the budget actually opened up the possibility that the center could be open for more days within this month, and with the hopes of providing more case management and assessment, and to prepare individuals for the inevitable closing on April 1st. Ideally, we would want as many people as possible directed to services and to be housed prior to closure. And in the meeting, I proposed that the shelter would be open every Sunday for the remainder of this month, regardless of the weather, so that folks could, at minimum, shower, do laundry, eat some food, and have eyes on them, and then, you know, hopefully beyond that, receive services and have contact and prepare these folks for the warmer seasons ahead. Proposal was accepted by the other mayors and the county commissioners, so now the center will be open every Sunday. On top of that, Carly's team requested that they do another, if not potentially two, more days of service at the center, which they talked about tonight. And these will likely be done with in the next coming weeks, I believe held on Mondays, I think. And again, the last day of service was extremely successful and provided tons of resources to these individuals, and I expect the same out of the next few. Lastly, in this meeting, many of the stakeholders were in attendance and spoke passionately about ensuring that the topic did not go ignored throughout the warmer months. And I want to reassure everybody here tonight and the council that I plan to continue meeting regularly with the mayors and the county, and hopefully the stakeholders, to ensure that we have a robust plan developed for the fall that is sustainable and better addresses the needs of the community. I'm committed to meeting with stakeholders, learning with them what needs to be done throughout the seacoast in the hopes of identifying gaps that we have in service, areas in which we can be seeing some improvements for next year, and ways to better provide service to these folks. service to these folks. Certainly, as progress is made, more information is made available. I will update the council and the city at that time, but that was kind of just the meeting. I think a lot of it was also captured from what was spoken about tonight. So my next item I'd like to discuss tonight is our 2024-2025 Summersworth budget. It is before us tonight under new business. So as is traditionally done, I respectfully request that the council suspend rules when we get to this item in order to have a second reading on the budget tonight. Immediately following the second reading, I again request that the council motion to lay the budget on the table. This will allow the council to then, you know, hear budget presentations at the next meeting, engage in our discussions when we have our budget workshop on the 6th of April, and then be able to pull the budget from the table whenever we are ready to actually act upon it. So again, just to reiterate, we'll hear it in first reading. I request a second reading, and I request it to be laid on the table immediately after. I do also request that when we do, in the future, remove it from the table, that we do it in a bifurcated process where we start with the school portion of the budget. At that time, I will be recusing myself from that discussions or any voting related to the school side of the budget, and I will leave you in the very capable hands of our deputy mayor, Witham, David Witham. So certainly, once that portion is then passed, I will step back into my role and then oversee the city portion of the budget. Again, that is further down the road, but I just wanted to at least set expectations at this point, so folks are aware when we get to that part. So again, first and foremost, tonight, we have the beginning parts of our budget. So here we go, right into budget season, everybody. My last thing tonight is I actually have a proclamation, which I'm quite excited to award. So I have tonight a proclamation proclaiming that March 2024 is Music in Our Schools Month in the City of Summersworth. So I'm actually going to invite up our Maplewood and Idlehurst music teacher, Mr. Maroni, up to the stand. I'm going to join him and read the proclamation. Thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Great to see you. So again, proclamation tonight is proclaiming March 2024 as Music in Our Schools Month in the City of Summersworth. Whereas, for more than 30 years, March has been officially designated as, by the National Association of Music Education, as Music in Our Schools Month, encouraging communities across the nation to focus on music education; and whereas, music education is part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in our national Every Student Succeeds Act; and whereas, the purpose of this celebration is to raise awareness of the lasting positive impacts of music education on the academic, personal, and professional goals of our students; and whereas, music education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning; and whereas, our music educators, students, and community members throughout Summersworth demonstrate the importance of quality music education programs to the lives of young people; and whereas Summersworth joins our music students, educators, and communities in celebrating the power of music education. Now therefore, I, Matt Gerding, Mayor of the City of Summersworth, New Hampshire, on behalf of the Summersworth City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Music in Our Schools Month in the City of Summersworth and encourage all citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that music education is an essential part of every student's well-rounded education. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I have one for you right there. And then, two other music educators were not able to be here, but I will pass those over to you. If you could distribute those, that would be amazing.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Right. Congratulations. So respectfully. Next on the agenda is item 11, which is reports of standing committees. We have Finance Committee Chairman Witham.
No report this evening, thank you.
No, I don't. I'm sorry. Again, that concludes my report. We are on to item 11, Reports of Standing Committees. Finance Committee Chair Counselor Witham. Apologize.
Still no report.
Thank you. Just worth repeating. I turned it off before I went. Why did I do that? Next up, Government Operations Committee Chairman Michu.
Same as Counselor Witham, no report.
Thank you. Next up, Economic Development Committee Chairman Goodwin.
No report. I don't think I, yeah, no report.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Public Safety Committee Chairman Pepin.
I have no report this evening.
All right, wow, look at this. Next up, Public Works and Environment Committee Chairman Witham.
No report, but I would announce that the committee will be meeting next Tuesday afternoon at 3:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. And lastly, Recreation Committee Chairwoman Cameron.
We are meeting Wednesday at 4:30 here.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is item 12, which is Reports of Special Committees. Are there any reports of special committees? Yes, Counselor Cameron.
Turn my microphone on. The Mayor's Commission on Culture, Ethnicity, and the Arts met on Wednesday, March 13th, and our first task on the agenda was to pick the artist winners. So we did that as the mayor had announced. It was the photo, it's a quilt, and the pottery. So I was very pleased with the photo because it was a lighthouse, and you guys all know that's my passion, so I was very thrilled with that one. And then after that, what we talked about was the mayor had presented us with some New Hampshire Arts Council funding through multiple grant programs, and there were a couple on there that pertained to the schools. So I forwarded that information to the Chair of the School Board, Maggie Lawson, for them to look over. And then there's one that our group will be talking to the city manager and staff about, is for community engagement grants, which would have to do with murals and beautifying downtown. So we'll be looking into that. And after that, we concluded our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Counselor Messier.
Yeah, thank you. March 12th, the school board met. I was there. The meeting started at 7:00, ended about 8:00. Pretty much, the big news was they offered the superintendent's position to a John Shea. They're in negotiations for a contract. So that was that. They also thanked the benefactors, lack of a better term, of the fundraising for the band uniforms. So they acknowledged that's part of their policy to acknowledge that, and they did that. That was pretty much, other than the, they're also in the process of advertising and the timeline for Assistant Superintendent and Special Ed Director. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Other reports of special committees? Yes, Counselor Witham, or I mean, Goodman.
The Island 30 Committee met directly before this meeting this evening, and we had a discussion of onboarding, sort of continuing the onboarding conversation from the last meeting and allowing new members to the committee to contribute to the goal setting. And we are hoping to have the school board nominate someone to fill the seat that is reserved for them on the committee, as education is one of the core tenants of the committee and the vision, and look forward to fold that person in and then sort of refine our goals into sort of action list with priorities and timelines, sort of trying to hone in on deliverables. And once that's cleaned up and ready for primetime, we will present that to council.
Thank you so much. Other reports of special committees? All right, seeing as there are no more, I will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Members of Council. I have the following comments this evening under unfinished business resolution 3624, regarding authorizing the manager to execute the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire Cost Sharing Agreement and Member Services Contract. I'd just point out, I emailed you, I believe, I did attach a hard copy of the email that I sent to all regarding liability coverage, especially on any data breach that I received from Mr. Herndon, who's here today also. Under new business of the fiscal year budget, 2024 to 2025, as I notified you last week, the city manager's proposed budget for the next fiscal year, and the school department budget has been submitted in accordance with the city charter. Mayor Gerding has scheduled a public hearing for Monday, April 1st. The city's manager's budget presentation starts at 6:00, will start at 6:00 p.m. I'm sure the school board will also have a brief presentation regarding an overview of their budget. The budget public hearing will be posted for 7:00 p.m. as part of the regular council meeting. The next two ordinances are in regards to, the first one, 1024, amending the water ordinance, changing the rates, fees, and charges to increase the water utility rates effective July 1, 2024, and July 1, 2025. And also, ordinance 1124, amend the sewer ordinance regarding sewer use volume charges, which will increase the sewer, if approved, increase the sewer volume charges effective, again, the next two years, July 1 of '24 and July 1 of '25. The Finance Committee met to discuss both these issues on February 21st to review possible increases to our water and sewer utility rates. The committee voted to recommend a 10% increase for both utilities. I did provide an analysis that Finance Director Smith completed regarding the water sewer rates that shows the estimated increases for each of the proposed two years. The next supplemental appropriation, ordinance 1224, again, the Finance Committee met on February 21st and voted to recommend the supplemental appropriation. I did provide the council with a memorandum from Director Smith regarding this meter replacement program. For all these ordinances listed, 924, 1024, 1124, and 1224, Your Honor, I'd recommend a, public hearings be scheduled for the next regular council meeting.
Sounds good. If there's no objection.
Under new business resolutions, the first one, 4124, is in regards to authorizing the manager to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, Opera Funds, and also the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software Incorporated of Cary, North Carolina for smart gov software. Again, this was vetted through the Finance Committee at the February 21st meeting, who voted to support this resolution. I provided you information that was spelled out in memorandum from Director Michelle Mears, explaining the benefits of this online permitting software. Please note that land use applications and building permit applications will still be available to be submitted as done now with printing forms online or coming into the office and doing it pen in hand. For those who aren't tech savvy, will have both opportunity, both to do it by paper or by online. The next one, 4024, regarding authorizing the manager to contract with FireTech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine, for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. Again, Finance Committee voted to support this resolution, and I provide you information from our interim fire chief, Mark Delner, regarding utilization of the mass state bid list we've utilized in the past. Run down very quickly some informational items. Congressional designated spending, CDS funding, was approved for library ADA improvements and expansion. Received a call from staff person Tina from Senator Sheen's office last Tuesday informing me that the funding bill was approved, which will award the city $500,000 to assist in moving the library accessibility and expansion project to the next phase. City staff had submitted this request, I had informed the council we were submitting it back in March of '23. Fire Department Grant Application attaches a summary of the FEMA grant application that Chief Delner and his staff submitted that would complete the department's SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus project if it's approved. I want to thank the chief and his staff for their efforts. City Clerk Grant Application, I have approved the attached request, I provided you a memo from the city clerk's office, to submit for additional moose plate grant funding. This will continue city efforts on our preservation of vital records. Again, I'd like to extend my thanks to our city clerks, Kristen and Amy, for their efforts in moving this forward. More grants, Police Department Grant Application, I have approved the police department's grant application for congressionally-directed spending funding of a little over $123,000 to replace 30 mobile radios that are 9 to 15 years old. You got a reminder about the workshops and special meetings moving forward, April 1st, the Saturday Budget Review, April 6th, and April 22nd, Monday, is the special city council meeting if it's needed, solely focused on the budget. That concludes my comments, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to Agenda Item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments, the following are being introduced this evening and placed in nomination. Bradley Fredette for reappointment to the zoning board of adjustments with a term to expire April 2027. Nancy Mitchell for appointment to the Library Board of Trustees with a term to expire April 2029. And lastly, Sarah Roberts Terry for appointment to the Library Board of Trustees with a term to expire April 2029. In accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments and nominations, the nominations will remain open until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 14 is items that have been laid upon the table. We have none tonight. Item 15 is unfinished business. First up, resolutions. The chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 36-24 to authorize the city manager to execute the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire Cost Sharing Agreement Member Services Contract, and to approve the associated policies for risk, rates, reserves, and data security and privacy. City Clerk.
Resolution number 3624, to authorize the city manager to execute the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire Cost Sharing Agreement Member Services Contract, and to approve the associated policies for risk, rates, reserves, and data security and privacy.
Thank you. Resolution 36-24, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment being offered, the chair will look for a motion on Resolution 36-24. Counselor Witham?
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Counselor Witham moves to the adoption of Resolution 36-24, seconded by Counselor Messier. Motion for the council is to adopt Resolution 36-24. Is there a discussion tonight? Yes, Counselor Witham.
Thank you. I hate to characterize the resolution as administrative minutia, but that's a bit of what this is. It's just moving this ball further down the road. Both the Cost Sharing Agreement and the Member Services Contract are language that have been adopted by all the communities in the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. So it's standard boilerplate language, for lack of a better way to describe it. It has been vetted out by many communities, not only ours, so I feel very comfortable with this. And I take this opportunity, I know Mr. Herndon is here from the coalition, just to say that you folks, and Henry, you in particular, have been right at our side through this whole process, sort of holding our hand, answering all of the questions. I know I did have a question about the, you know, data security and coverages for that. We got a very thorough response around that, so that adds to the comfort level in moving this forward. At the end of the day, this is going to save ratepayers here in the community money. It's the right thing to do, and I appreciate the support that we've gotten. So thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion tonight? All right, seeing as there is no more. If you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 36-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. The clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 36-24 has been adopted. All right. Next up, chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 37-24, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with N. Greenwich and Sons of Salem, Massachusetts, to construct the Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project, which, if adopted, would contract with them for an amount not to exceed $1,176,656 for the complete streets construction on Constitutional Way. City Clerk.
Resolution number 3724, to authorize the city manager to contract with N. Greenwich and Sons of Salem, Massachusetts, to construct the Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project.
Thank you. Resolution 37-24, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment? Yes. Counselor Goodwin.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 30-
Resolution 37-24, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment? Yes. Counselor Goodwin.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 37-24 to include the construction of a crosswalk on north side of Constitutional Way and High Street, intersection of north, excuse me, the north side of High Street, the intersection of Constitutional Way, including solar-powered, flashing pedestrian beacons on both sides of the crosswalk, and within the existing budget, so that would be funded from contingency.
Let me just write that down, one second. All right. So, just to repeat, make sure I have everything. The amendment is to amend to include a crosswalk on the north side of High Street at the intersection of Constitutional Way, and to include solar-powered, flashing crosswalk beacons, and utilize existing funding to pay for this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes. Seconded by Counselor Parity Catanzaro. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Vincent.
We've just gone through the whole bid process. I'm not trying to undermine your amendment. However, the right thing to do would probably be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be to send it back to committee, but we're this far. So, I mean, you're talking additional $100,000 maybe or more. To do $100,000 at a bat of an eyelash, I don't think I'm in favor of that.
Discussion? Yes. Counselor Witham, then Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you. We did have an engineering report issued to us about the, I guess, the pros and cons of the crosswalk installation, and attached to that were some cost estimates, which I think were in the mid-teens. I'll use 15,000, 16,000, that seems to come to mind. That did not include the solar-powered rectangular rapid-flash beacons that are added to this amendment. I know we've installed those in the city. I'm guessing they're less than $20,000. So, I think we're looking more in the vicinity of maybe $30,000 here, $35,000 for this addition, I'm guessing, is the, would be the ballpark pricing. The contingency for the project is 100,000 plus, a little bit more than that. I guess my question for the city manager, or if we need to involve Director Smith, we can suspend rules, is if we got to a point where the contingency was eaten up, for whatever reason, we had some unexpected cost or things of that nature, it would then be flagged by N. Grenice and city staff to come back to city council for supplemental appropriation beyond the bond, right? So, there's a parachute, if you will, to cover any cost that we might incur because of this. So, I'm not worried about the cost element. I will tell you, my concern with the crosswalk was sort of that visibility component that the engineer flagged when you turn from Constitutional Way on the High Street. Those fears are relayed a little bit with the flashing beacons that are proposed here, so I guess I have a bit of a comfort level with this.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you. Yeah, just echoing, working in the construction industry, I would not anticipate this costing anywhere near $100,000. I think the estimate that Counselor Witham has provided is plenty. I don't have experience building streets via, you know, public, the public process, so I'm not exactly sure what that construction process is like, but I do undertake multimillion-dollar construction projects as part of my day job, and they consist of design documents that are bid out, and there's a contract, and then you get into construction and things change. The owner changes their mind, which is, in this scenario, we, the council, are the owner, and/or there are unforeseen conditions which need to be responded to. So that is why a contingency exists, and I think this is by far the most efficient time to do this work. If we send it back for independent design and construction, it's going to cost more because it's more mobilizations, it's a separate contract, it's going to take forever. You know, if I was on council earlier on, when Constitutional Way was in design, I would have flagged this earlier in the process so that it wasn't an amendment, but that was not my timeline, so here I am. I do think this is a, as previously stated, a good value for the community. It's a crosswalk that existed historically. It is, I would argue, probably the most heavily-used crosswalk in the most sort of successful portion of our downtown core. People are constantly jaywalking there, myself included. So, I think this is formalizing a desire path that people want and making it safer. For the concerns about drainage, again, I work with civil engineers all the time, it is solvable. I'm not a civil engineer, so I haven't sat down and done the grades, but it's just a matter of making sure your grades are such that the water is sloping away from, from the property behind the curb. As it is, that curb is required by code to be four to six inches above the street, so the sidewalk is already four to six inches above the street. So, just from a very high-level feasibility on, you know, flooding concerns that had been previously mentioned, I'm not concerned about this. The engineer is going to have to design a compliant crosswalk, which meets both drainage and ADA, so that is implicit in this amendment. So, just to sort of speak to some of the concerns I'd heard previously, I really appreciate people's support in this. I think it is a great benefit to the downtown and to pedestrian safety.
Thank you. Other discussion. Counselor Parity Catanzaro, and then Counselor Vincent.
Yeah, two comments. One to safety, I appreciate the flashing beacons to help mitigate some of the safety concerns that were raised by the engineering study that had looked at this and priced it out already. I think one thing that was missed is how unsafe that other opposite crosswalk is. I think all of us know people who've almost been hit, like ourselves, or people who have been hit in that crosswalk because of approaching traffic to turn left onto Constitutional, and the traffic that just sort of swerves around them and will almost hit or hit people in that, in that crosswalk. So I think this crosswalk would add a lot of safety, especially for those jaywalking already. And to the drainage point, I did notice that that, the curb in front of what's currently a pawn shop there is already cut. There's already a cut there, and I think it's been brought up before as a drainage issue, and the cut's already there. So, I would agree that taking the engineering study that's already been looked at this and that's already priced it well under the contingency, it's a good savings to our taxpayers to do this now. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, if it's going to be within what you were talking about, Counselor Witham, about the $30,000 or a little bit more, I can live with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Messier.
Yeah, let me explain a little bit of this process. This went out to bid, Greness bid on it as the bidding documents were supplied. So any change that's voted on tonight by contract has to go out for a change order. There's going to have to be some engineering, because Greness isn't going to assume any liability if the water coming down Highland Street goes into the budding property, especially the curbing across the street from the pawn shop, the pawn, pawn shop. Because that was raised because the water coming down the hill was going into that building. So, it's not an easy, you can vote for, that's fine, but it's not an easy process. By contract, it is not an easy, I don't care what they do in housing for a timber, this is different, because you're going to have to take the calculations from the water coming down the hill and find a storm drain that that's going to go into. So you have storm drain, you have curbing, because that curbing has to be cut for ADA. So, however, if it passes, fine. I'm just saying, it's not, it's most likely not going to be $30,000. I hope I'm wrong, but I've been wrong before, so thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion on the amendment? All right. Seeing as there is no more, I'm going to restate the amendment just so folks know what they are voting on. Again, it's an amendment for Resolution 37-24. The amendment is to add a crosswalk on the north side of High Street at the intersection of Constitutional Way, and to include solar-powered, flashing crosswalk beacons, and to utilize existing funding for that. So, again, just to clarify, that's the motion before us for this amendment.
I'd like to request a roll call vote on the amendment.
So, requested, without objection, I got a second. Without objection, we'll do a roll call vote. I think that makes sense to me as well. So, without further ado, I will pass it over to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron?
No.
Messier?
No.
Peppin?
No.
Vincent?
No.
Gibson?
No.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
No.
Witham?
Yes.
All right. For a vote of six noes, three yeses, the amendment does not pass. All right. So, we'll go back to our Resolution 37-24. Are there any other amendments that will be brought forward for us tonight? Seeing no other amendments, the chair will look for a motion on Resolution 37-24. Counselor Witham?
Point of order, Your Honor.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have a question on, on what obviously we're talking about. So, was it a change, was the previous motion or amendment a change to just do the light and the sidewalk crossing? It's together, correct? It wasn't two separate things, correct? Because I was going to say, maybe we could just do the light if we didn't have to play with the engineering on the sidewalk.
Is that a motion?
No, it's not. It's just a, just a thinking aloud, if anybody else has any ideas. Thank you.
We have a motion on the resolution before us, so I'm going to throw it back to Counselor Witham.
I'll move for the adoption of Resolution 3724 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, Counselor Gibson. All right. Motion before the council is to adopt Resolution 37-24. Is there a discussion? Okay. Seeing as there is none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 37-24, and this is as presented tonight, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 37-24 has been adopted. All right. That will move us to Resolution 38-24. The chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 38-24, which is for the city council vote to authorize a bond to construct the Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project, which would allow the city to enter into a bond agreement not to exceed $2,367,256 for the construction of the Complete Streets Project on Constitutional Way. City clerk.
Resolution number 3824, city council vote to authorize a bond to construct the Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project.
All right. Resolution 38-24, having had a public hearing and been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment? All right. Seeing no amendment being offered, chair will look for a motion on Resolution 38-24. Counselor Witham?
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Counselor Witham moves for the adoption of Resolution 38-24, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Motion before the council is to adopt Resolution 38-24. Is there a discussion? Okay. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 38-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 38-24 has been adopted. It moves us to Resolution 39-24. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 39-24, to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, to provide resident inspection and construction engineering services associated with Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project, which, if approved, would contract with them for an amount not to exceed $190,600 for the inspection and construction engineering services for Constitutional Way. City clerk.
Resolution number 3924, to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, to provide resident inspection and construction engineering services associated with Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project, which, if approved, would contract with them for an amount not to exceed $190,600 for the inspection and construction engineering services for Constitutional Way. City clerk. Resolution number 3924, to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, to provide resident inspection and construction engineering services associated with the Constitutional Way Complete Streets Project.
Thank you. Resolution 39-24, having been read a first and second time, is now open for further amendment? All right. No amendment being offered. Chair is looking for a motion on Resolution 39-24. Yes, Counselor Messier.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 3924.
Counselor Messier moves for the adoption of Resolution 39-24, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Motion for the council is to adopt Resolution 39-24. Discussion? Okay. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 39-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 39-24 has been adopted. All right. That moves us to Agenda Item 16, which is new business. We start off with our ordinances. Our first up is ordinance 9-24.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to suspend council rules to read by title only, for obvious reasons.
There's a motion to read by title only by Counselor Witham, seconded by Counselor Gibson. If you are in favor of the motion, you will state by saying aye. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The ayes have it, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. So, we will now read by title only, which I think makes perfect sense, since nobody wants to sit through the entirety of the budget, or at least yet. All right. Yeah, wherever. So, the chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance 9-24, which is our fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. City clerk.
Ordinance number 924, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Witham.
Again, I'd like to suspend council rules this time for a second reading on the ordinance.
All right. Counselor Witham makes a motion to suspend council rules for a second reading on ordinance 9-24. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Parity Catanzaro. Question before the council is the suspension of council rules to have a second reading tonight on ordinance 9-24. I'll open it up to discussion if anyone has it, but seeing none. If you are in favor of the motion, again, you will state by saying aye. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. So, if you are in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are you, if you are opposed, please state by saying no. Okay. I think there's a bit of confusion.
You're not sure.
Again, this is a, and that might have been on me, I'll take, I'll take that one. Again, just to make clear, while you're going to do this again, the motion is to suspend rules to allow for a second reading on ordinance 9-24, which would then open it up so that it could be laid upon the table. Again, this is something I mentioned in my mayor's report. I think I was unclear about the motion part, so just want to make that clear. We're going to do the vote again, just because it seemed like it was unclear. If you are in favor of the motion, you will say by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If you are opposed, you will say by saying no. Okay. Seeing that the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, the motion passes.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we place the ordinance on the table.
All right. Do we need to have the second reading first?
Oh, yes.
I would think we should have it read, and then we'll get to that. So, thank you. Do you mind rescinding your motion?
I rescind.
Thank you. All right.
Read in full?
Uh, no, just by title. So, the chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 9-24, which is the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. City clerk.
Ordinance number 924, fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Thank you. Now that it has been read a first and second time, are there other motions tonight? Counselor Witham.
Yes, I'd like to move that we place the ordinance on the table.
All right, Counselor Witham moves that Ordinance 9-24 will be placed upon the table, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Discussion?
On debate.
True, good point. See, I'm learning these things. I didn't know that. So, again, the motion before the council is to lay Ordinance 9-24 on the table. Just for clarification purposes, we're going to do a roll call vote without any opposition. So, if you are in favor of laying Ordinance 9-24 on the table, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yeah.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
No.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ordinance 9-24 has been laid upon the table. All right, we will get to that one very, very soon, I do promise. All right, next up, under new business, remember where new business is, Ordinance 10-24. Everyone good? Okay, chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on Ordinance 10-24, to amend Chapter 32 Water Ordinance by amending Section 16.1. A titled Rates, Fees, and Charges to increase the water utility rates effective July 1, 2024, and July 1, 2025. City clerk.
Ordinance number 1024, to amend Chapter 32 Water Ordinance by amending Section 16.1. A titled Rates, Fees, and Charges to increase the water utility rates effective July 1, 2024, and July 1, 2025, March 18, 2024. The City of Somersworth ordains that the ordinances of the City of Somersworth as amended be further amended as follows. Amend Chapter 32, Section 16.1. A titled Rates, Fees, and Charges by deleting the second paragraph in its entirety and replace it with the following. All water users will be charged a rate of $5.94 per 100 cubic feet of water used beginning July 1, 2024; $6.53 per 100 cubic feet of water used beginning July 1, 2025. Background, by passage of this ordinance, the city council is increasing the water use volume charge 10% effective July 1, 2024, and 10% effective July 1, 2025. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Ordinance 10-24, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next scheduled meeting. Chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on Ordinance 11-24, to amend Chapter 8A Sewer Ordinance by amending Charges Article 15, Section 7. B titled Sewer Use Volume Charges to increase the sewer volume charges effective July 1, 2024, July 1, 2025. City clerk.
Ordinance number 1124, to amend Chapter 8A Sewer Ordinance by amending Charges Article 15, Section 7. B titled Sewer Use Volume Charges to increase the sewer volume charges effective July 1, 2024, and July 1, 2025, March 18, 2024. The City of Somersworth ordains that the ordinances of the City of Somersworth as amended be further amended as follows. Amend Chapter 8A Article 15, Section 7. B titled Sewer Use Volume Charges by deleting it in its entirety and replace it with the following. All sewer users will be charged at a rate of $8.83 per 100 cubic feet of water used beginning July 1, 2024; $9.75 per 100 cubic feet of water used beginning July 1, 2025. Background, by passage of this ordinance, the city council is increasing the sewer use volume charge 10% effective July 1, 2024, and 10% effective July 1, 2025. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, approved city attorney.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can I ask a question on that?
Absolutely.
100 cubic feet is 750 gallons, correct?
I don't know the conversion.
Well, and the reason why I asked the question, I see, yes, it's kind of funny, but people at home don't know what 100 cubic feet is. So, if we could ask, is it 750 gallons, Mike? Okay, okay, so 750 gallons, that's what it's going to go up to.
Thank you.
Thank you for humoring me.
I appreciate it. All right, Ordinance 11-24, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Ordinance 12-24, supplemental appropriation for additional funding needed for water meter replacement program. City clerk.
Ordinance number 1224, supplemental appropriation for additional funding needed for the water meter replacement program, March 18, 2024. The City of Somersworth ordains that pursuant to Section 7.7A of the City Charter, the annual budget for the City of Somersworth for fiscal year 2023-2024 is amended as follows. Appropriate $75,000 from the water fund budget, and appropriate $50,000 from the sewer fund budget as follows. Water fund original budget, $3,236,505. Amendment, $75,000. Revised water fund budget, $3,311,505. Sewer fund original budget, $4,183,996. Amendment, $50,000. Revised sewer fund budget, $4,233,996. Approved as to funding, Scott A. Smith, Director of Finance and Administration, recorded by Kristen Lepan, City Clerk. Background, this ordinance appropriates additional funding to complete the residential meter replacement program. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage. This ordinance requires a public hearing and requires a two-thirds majority vote of the city council after the public hearing, subject to Section 7.4.1 and Section 7.7A of the City Charter. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-24, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to our resolutions under new business tonight. Chair recognizes clerk for a first reading on Resolution 41-24, to authorize city manager to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software Inc. of Cary, North Carolina for smart gov software for the Department of Developmental Services. City clerk.
Resolution number 4124, to authorize the city manager to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software Inc. of Cary, North Carolina for smart gov software, March 18, 2024. Whereas the city, excuse me, whereas the Somersworth Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2025-2030 includes a project to provide online permitting software for use by the Department of Development Services. And whereas, city staff researched qualified companies and requested and received demonstrations from a number of these software companies that provide similar products. And whereas, after reviewing products available, city staff determined that smart gov by Brightly Software of Cary, North Carolina provides a platform that best meets the needs of the city with an initial cost of $48,386. And whereas, the finance committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff and recommends the city contract with Brightly Software for smart gov software for an amount not to exceed $48,386. And whereas, the finance committee also recommends the city fund this contract using available funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software for smart gov software for an amount not to exceed $48,386, and to take any and all other action relative to this purchase determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 41-24, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 42-24, to authorize city manager to contract with Fire Tech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. City clerk.
Resolution number 4224, to authorize the city manager to contract with Fire Tech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, March 18, 2024. Whereas, the Somersworth Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2024-2029 contains a recommendation to replace all self-contained breathing apparatus used by the fire department over a four-year period. And whereas, the fiscal year 2023-2024 adopted budget contains an appropriation for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus representing the first year of this program. And whereas, Fire Tech and Safety of New England is a certified vendor for self-contained breathing apparatus on the Massachusetts State Bid List. And whereas, city staff recommends purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus from Fire Tech and Safety of New England utilizing the Massachusetts State Bid List at a cost not to exceed $108,000. And whereas, the finance committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff and recommends the city contract with Fire Tech and Safety of New England for an amount not to exceed $108,000. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to contract with Fire Tech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department at an amount not to exceed $108,000, and take any and all other actions relative to this purchase determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, approved city attorney.
Counselor Witham.
Yes, I'd like to move to suspend council rules to act on this resolution.
I second that.
Counselor Witham makes a motion to suspend council rules for a second reading on Resolution 42-24, seconded by Counselor Vincent. So, again, question for the council is suspension of council rules for a second reading on Resolution 42-24. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Messier.
I just want to make a comment. I don't know why we didn't do this for the prior one. It's the same thing that's been on, but I'm going to vote no because I don't see the, why we need to hurry. We had two individuals here from the planning department on the prior one, and I thought we were going to do the same for both. So, I'll be voting no, but I will be voting to approve it.
Thank you. Counselor Witham.
Yeah, my only notion in suspending rules here is just knowing the long lead time to get this equipment. It can be years sometimes, so it's important to get in queue.
I'll give them that, okay.
Other discussion? All right, if you are in favor of the motion, you will state by saying aye.
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 All right, if you are opposed, you will state by saying no.
No.
All right, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, the motion passes. So, chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 42-24.
Resolution number 4224, to authorize the city manager to contract with Fire Tech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department.
All right, Resolution 42-24, having been read a first and now second time, is open to amendment. Is there amendment? Yes.
Oh.
No?
Sorry, no.
No amendment being offered. Chair will look for a motion on Resolution 42-24. Counselor Vincent.
I make a motion, I make a motion and move on it.
All right, Counselor Vincent makes a motion to adopt Resolution 42-24, seconded by Counselor Peppin. So, again, motion before the council is the adoption of Resolution 42-24. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Gibson.
The reason why I voted to not suspend rules to vote this a second time is, sorry, to read it a second time. I've always had a problem with suspending the rules to move votes forward. I understand the urgency issue with it, but I wonder why we get placed in this situation of having to rush through to get something approved when it seems like if you're going to be buying apparatus, that's something you knew about quite a while ago. Just my opinion on the subject.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yeah, I just wanted to share why I'm in support of this and at the accelerated pace. I learned on the Public Safety Committee that this was funds that were able to be repurposed from some other funds that were available, I think for the tower, and that we got approved to cover this. So, it was something that, you know, through regular means, would not have had the opportunity to get it this soon. So, that's why I'll be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Witham.
Yeah, thank you. I do believe that they were able to repurpose those funds for the tower, not for this, though. This is a budgeted item. In my notion on suspending council rules with a budgeted item, it's already made its way through the budget process, so council has already endorsed the expenditure. As we all know, we, our prior fire chief resigned, the current fire chief stepped in and immediately began working on the acquisition of several items allocated for the fire department in the budget, this being one of them. He's got it to us, in front of us. Sure, could wait another two weeks, but I know this stuff is just one of those items that takes time to get.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, seeing no more, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 42-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yeah.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
All right, Resolution 42-24 has been adopted. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 17, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings in accordance with Council Rule 7-C. The time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect as long as the mayor remembers it, unless the council wishes to suspend rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Anyone who wishes to speak? All right, thank you. Next is Item 18, closing comments by council members. We will start, who wants to go first? Counselor Witham? Let's go with you. You're up. I just decided.
Sure, so, not much tonight. A bit of a shout out. This past Saturday, we were able to get a small group of folks to get the ball field ready for play this season. I can honestly say, I don't think we've ever had it playable this early ever before. I don't know as though we've ever been able to step on that field in March, so this is highly unusual. I don't know what it means. I won't go there, but it's just unusual. And a big shout out to a local business, Patriot Tractor. They loaned us a commercial sort of leaf blower, which helped us to clear the field of debris. If there weren't a million pine cones, there wasn't one. And there was a fair amount of dog droppings on the field as well. That leaf blower moved those equally as well. So, a big shout out to Patriot Tractor. That saved us from having to rent something and just saved a lot of time. Giving shout outs to organizations, I can also give a shout out to the Somersworth Women's Club and the Somersworth Festival Association. They've both contributed towards a new sound system for the field. As you know, Eric Momson is our voice of Somersworth Sports here in the city, and our sound system up there has failed. So, we are on our way towards funding that project. We still have a ways to go. Hopefully, we can get the funding before the season starts, so just a plea out there to the community. So, my public service announcement for the night. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you. Wanted to provide a reminder for folks that the next Economic Development Committee meeting is going to be held on April 11th, and in lieu of a normal meeting, we are hosting a community workshop to get feedback from folks on the One Winter Street property. So, that's April 11th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. So, I would appreciate folks coming out to contribute their ideas. I'm going to be prepping some feasibility analysis just for discussion purposes. But definitely want to hear what, you know, what folks envision for the site and help the committee make a recommendation to council on how to move forward. I'd also guess, I'd just state that, you know, I'm a little disappointed with the vote on the sidewalk amendment this evening. I guess I was optimistic that it was low-hanging fruit for improving pedestrian safety in downtown, supporting businesses in downtown, supporting one of the issues that I think contributes to our perception of a parking problem, which is traffic calming and safe paths to available parking. If not now, when? You know, I don't know when we are going to go back to the drawing board. We're not going to have a separate engineering process and bid process for this crosswalk, so I assume this is the council saying they don't care, and this is not a priority for them. them. But it says a lot about our priorities, I think, in the downtown, and I think this would have been, if not completely within the contingency, you know, it would have cost minimal extra dollars, so I'm just a little disappointed that we didn't take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. Earth Day is Monday, April 22nd, so why am I bringing this up? Because Don't Trash Somersworth kicks off on April 20th, a couple days before Earth Day, and I'm very excited about this. We are going to meet at the lower parking lot of Home Depot, and our first area of cleanup will be around the Willand Warming Center, the little, is it Handle? Handle Street, Handle Drive right there on the right, and the road going out to the Willand Warming Center. So it's only an hour of your time, one hour, two to three, on Saturday, April 20th, and we'll see how much trash we can pick up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Messier.
Thank you. I just want to shout out to Rye Beach Landscaping for the destruction of the hotel. That was quite a thing. They pulled that roof down without, and no walls going out into Elm Street. I mean, that roof part with the shingles, that just slid in. So whoever the engineer for Rye Beach, they did a good job. I, a friend of mine was standing there, we were taking bets if the wall was going to go to Elm Street and miss a school board meeting or whatever, but it did. So, I mean, they did hit the wire and blow a transformer, but those things happen. And it's nice to see three or four old dilapidated buildings, eyesores torn down. Hopefully, Mr. Stevens can do a good job on that building. And I was also happy to read or hear that the solar array on the landfill may be coming to fruition. So, I mean, that's a long time coming. And the other third one I was going to bring up is the heat in this room. All of a sudden, now we're getting heat at the end of the meeting? I mean, I'm over here freezing.
No, it's cold.
If I need to wear a coat, can somebody let me know? Are we that poor that we have to keep the heat at 60? I mean, come on. I'm here for an hour or two. I mean, enough.
Tell them to dress up.
And then, when, if somebody can get back to me about, I thought there was going to be a meeting for parking downtown, because I have a property owner, business owner, that would like to come along and offer some suggestion. He did offer to buy some property and tear a building down and build a parking lot, but I don't know if he found one yet, but if there's a meeting coming up, could somebody let me know so I can let Ed know and go with him? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Wait a minute. I do have one other.
All right. You can go. It's fine.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I mean, the gentleman tonight gave a shout out to our employees in this building, and I'd just like to echo that, as well as police, fire. One thing about this community, we do have some very good employees and that like to take care of people. The Planning Department, I was at some places this weekend, and a shout out to the director and everybody in that building, as well as the gentleman expressed, Mr. Conley. So across the hallway to the ladies that work downstairs, across the way, everybody does a great job. And as one, I appreciate that. So thank, thank them all.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Peppin.
Thank you, Mayor. I know my blood pressure's come down a little bit since the opening of the meeting, so hopefully I can keep it down a little bit here. I'd just like to clarify a little bit of my thoughts, especially to you, Mayor, so when you go to the council and stuff like this. I think every life is very, very precious, and that is number one, whether it's homeless, someone addicted to drugs, or whatever the situation. I think the people that are running the homeless shelter are doing an excellent job in what they have to work with. My biggest problem out of this whole deal is that they're probably doing too good of a job because they're drawing people from all around, and I think this, they've grown out of the facility. I don't think the facility is adequate for them. And other things are, is that there's other communities, and I was using their records when I said these other towns and communities, getting a free ride, and I don't think Stratford County even cares about Somersworth and Dover and Rochester, and as long as they're paying, they don't really care. So as long as we build it, they will come, which I expect, and I don't expect any homeless person not to come. And I don't really care if they come from Exeter, Dover, or Rochester, or wherever they come from. They're homeless. They should be taken care of. All right? But I don't think it's, it should be on the taxpayers, at least on the portion, all in the city of Somersworth that we end up giving. I know it's not all of it. I know Dover and Rochester contributes, but I just see it getting bigger and bigger. And that's, that's what I'm having a problem with. I mean, we see it nationally-wise through the border that communities are getting overwhelmed from people coming to our country, and I hate to say it, but it's going to, and if we keep the gates open here in Somersworth at the homeless shelter, it's going to get overwhelming again. I think the numbers are going to outmatch what we can support without some help. I don't know how else to turn around and get the word out to the people that they have to chime in and do something also. It shouldn't be just left up to three communities. There's where my problem is. My problem is not with, with the people that are running the organization, and my hat's off to them. I think they do a great job and everything else. My, my problem is, is that when you have people from other Rockingham country, Exeter Imports, funneling people this way, that's where my problem is. It's not with the homeless shelter, it's not with the homeless people, it's not with the people that have addictions. Like I say, my, my main effort is, is that I love to see everybody be able to have a healthy life and be able to live in this country peacefully and whatever. But there's a time I, it's like everybody says, this is a problem that's a lot bigger than what we can cure, and I just want to make sure that the taxpayers of Somersworth... I guess what, that's what bothers me is that I started off on this city council, our roads were in shambles, and then I get a person saying, "Don't put any money into the roads, give it to the homeless people." You know, and you give a good presentation here tonight of what we've accomplished in this community and how we're trying to make it proud. Well, roads are part of it. People, I mean, I listened to it when I first got on this council. High Street was a mess. I mean, people wanted us to pay for their repairs on their cars coming down High Street. I've heard that comment before. So you bust your chops off trying to make Somersworth proud and have people proud of it, and then you, some people just throw it back at you, and my emotions got a little over, over what I could handle at the time, so I apologize for my, whatever I said. I hope, especially when someone cries out there, I don't know what I said to upset her, but I really didn't mean to upset anybody, and I apologize for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first thing, I'll take the easiest thing first. Dave, you need some money for your surround sound system or whatever over there, the speaker system for the baseball field. I do recall one year, Hilltop fireworks, somebody went over there and lit some fireworks off in your field, and you were upset. So what I'm going to do is this, Dave, you just tell me how much money you need, and Hilltop fireworks will go ahead and take good care of your surround, your system, okay? So there, don't even think no more about it, be happy. A shout out to the new restaurant in town down at the Plaza, Vietnamese Kitchen. Let me just say this, it's the real deal. It is absolutely fantastic. I think it's called Pet Vietnamese Kitchen. It's awesome. You have to try it. Counselor Goodwin. I just think that on this crosswalk thing, I think the decision was that the unknown of the engineering. But listen, if you can, if you can have a side talk with the city manager and someone can guarantee that it's only going to be $30,000, maybe you can bring it back up. I don't know if that's legal and not legal in the council, but I do believe that those crossing lights are actually something very, very important. They really are, and it is a small amount. I just hate to see the project held up and being brought back, but with that being said, you know, maybe there's another way around it. And my last comment is this. I contacted the city manager last week about backflow, backflow preventers, and he has accommodated me 100%, sending me the ordinance, the water ordinance and so forth. I have a problem with backflow testing. First of all, backflow, some of you may know and some of you may not know, it's a device that's put on our water system in case of something that comes into our house, goes back into the system and contaminates it and makes us all sick. So the current ordinance says that we will test twice a year. Well, I own Hilltop fireworks, and it says that all businesses will be tested, but there's some, the ordinance needs to be tweaked, so I'm going to work with the city manager on trying to get a better, some better wording on the ordinance. It's high hazard, moderate, and, or medium and low hazard, but they're all clumped in one big bunch. So why am I concerned? Well, because I own a business in town, and I have three backflows on one, on one business. And basically, I own a fireworks store that has a toilet and a sink. There's no hazard there, but according to the ordinance, I have to pay it. So, so New England backflow comes to my location twice a year and charges me $135 a pop, times three. Well, they came in on December 18th, roughly. Then they came back on January 23rd, roughly. I just think that is not right. I just don't like it. I think it's gouging. I wouldn't want it to, and listen, let's forget me, okay? Okay, I have it, but how about the other business that's struggling and don't have it? And it upsets me. I don't like it at all, so I'm going to try to work and try to figure this out because it's just not right. They came in 20-something days later and they charged us again? How much could have gone wrong in 20-something days? It's just, I understand what they're trying to do. They're trying to change the Somersworth area twice a year on January and then July 1st. Look, I don't care. It doesn't do anybody any benefit to test me 20 days and then charge me. They don't care. City, city really doesn't. I'm not just going to say that the city doesn't care because they do, but it's another city's problem because the city don't pay it. I do, or the, or the businesses. So it's one of these things I'm going to work on. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Just to clarify on the vote on the addition of the crosswalk component to the contract, I listened to what Mr. Messier had to say about the possible complications of doing that as far as engineering and so forth, and I understand completely. No firm is going to accept the possibility or liability without doing a comprehensive engineering study to guarantee that it doesn't exist. Whether it's really needed or not, I don't know, but I sure as hell would be doing it if it was my company. That's why I voted no. If it's a worthwhile thing, you can do, I don't know what you want to call it, an add-on after the fact, get it priced out, separate from your initial contract, and go from there. But that's not up to me. Anyways, I drove by Elm Street to just check out what it looked like there, and I had a thought occur to me. I remember all the moaning that was done by different people in the city about the consequences of urban renewal in the 60s, and that was the first thought that struck my mind was, yeah, the buildings needed to go. They were a hazard. To be replaced by a beautiful black parking lot, that's a hell of an improvement, facing right onto Washington Street and the downtown. And somebody's just talking about adding another parking lot downtown? Let's repeat the mistakes of the past. I just do not understand why people are so gung ho to do the same stupid stuff over I think one of the things that we need to also look at is revising whatever ordinance apply to the different zoning and the historic condition that requires that if you're in a situation that constitutes infill, if you tear a building down, you got to replace it with a building. I mean, well, I don't want to go where I'm heading right now, so. And I do want to follow up on what other people have said. I think we have an excellent group of people working for the city, City Hall, all the first responders, public works. They all do a great job, and they're all very pleasant to deal with. I can't remember a time in my, and I don't want to say how many years I've lived in Somersworth, that I had an issue with any of them that couldn't be resolved in an amicable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Parity Catanzaro.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Art, for coming out, welcome officially belated to Somersworth, and thank you so much for sparking all of us to join you and talking about how awesome our city staff is. It's wonderful also that you've had such good communication with our code enforcement officer. I know that's a, that's a really tough job, as you pointed out. Thank you for speaking up earlier. I definitely have not given up on the crosswalk. I don't know administratively how we could still include it in this one, but just to remind everyone, we did do an engineering study already. We had it scoped out, we had it priced already as part of this, and therefore I see no reason why we shouldn't be able to move it along. And if we can do it as part of this, then it won't come with its own additions and contingencies, as I'm sure it will if we try to do it all by itself. So I'm hopeful that with a little bit more information, we can move forward and make that happen. Excuse me. I did also just want to thank again the folks that came out at the beginning and just say how inspired I am at being able to look at this as a bottom-up approach and really looking at our local leaders who are leading the way in this and, you know, starting by continuing with what we have that's working really well and is really successful, and I look forward to those bigger conversations down the line as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And lastly, Counselor Micho.
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything this evening, but I have to. On that crosswalk on High Street in a constitutional way, wasn't it already vetted out in traffic safety at least once since I'm on the council, if not twice? And I thought it came out of committee saying that's not a good spot for it. I voted no because of what came out of the traffic safety. But if somebody actually wants to put solar-powered lights on the existing crosswalk there, I have no problem with it. So if we want to do something like that, I'm all in favor. And for the gentleman, gentlemen that came out and thanked the city employees and the staff downstairs, thank you very much. Very rarely you hear people complimenting and thanking our employees downstairs. They are amazing. I personally like to thank them. It's joy to walk into City Hall downstairs, to pay your water bill. People on both sides, they're all see, and they all wave into me. I appreciate it. Very friendly. So keep up the good work. People are noticing it, and people are coming up to me at least a couple of times since I've been on council, complimenting how festive it is downstairs during the holidays, how you guys like competition on each side, how you decorate. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hold on. Jumping ahead. Next up is future addenda items. Are there any agenda items requested for future meetings? All right. I will request that traffic safety look into the utility of solar-powered flashing crosswalk beacons at that intersection. So please make sure at the next meeting that makes it on the agenda. Seeing there's no others, we're going to go to number, yes, sir. You have another? Go for it.
Well, as I mentioned in my comment, I don't know who is the appropriate people, but I would like to have them look at some kind of ordinance pertaining to infill.
I think that's a good one. I think that that might be best suited for the joint commission between the historic district and city council. I think that that is a new committee that has yet to meet, but that might be a good task for them. So I'm going to task it out to them if that works for you. Great. All right. Other future agenda items? All right. Seeing none. Number twenty is non-public. We have none. Twenty-one is adjournment. Counselor Vincent moves that the city council stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Question before the council is adjournment. If you're in favor, please state by saying aye. If you're opposed, state by saying no.
No.
All right. Eyes have it. We are adjourned.